Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I will declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting has been webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Also, I'd just like to remind everyone to ensure that their phones are turned off as well, or on silence. Any statements made by individual persons in the course of this meeting and the statements of those individuals are not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of this meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the one raw peoples as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future, and I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Wapakal people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south, and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Sessnock local government area. Now, we have the opening prayer. Pastor Wayne Cambray?
Yes.
Yeah. All will stand for the prayer?
Yes. Just wanted to say that we, as we approach Christmas and the birth of Christ, because he came to save us, to give us peace, may that peace and wisdom of God come upon you tonight. And agree on the main things, where there's a little difference, agree to disagree. But God is good. Jeremiah twenty nine eleven says, just one scripture, "I know the thoughts I had towards you," says the Lord, "thoughts for good and not of evil, to give you a hope and a future." So God's blessing and intention is to wind up this year, looking for a tremendous year next year. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this meeting tonight. And I'm praying, Lord, your kingdom come and your will be done. Give them wisdom, knowledge and spiritual understanding. Let, Father, the will of God be revealed to everyone to live with purpose for the Sessnock City community and all the activities, Lord. Let the blessing of God come and make them rich and take away all sorrow. And I thank you, Lord, for every council member and for the mayor, as we share tonight in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Pastor Cambray. Now, apologies tonight, so I believe there's only one apology. Councillor Tracy Harrington? Oh, and also we have a leave of absence too, to note too. So councillor Hill for the period of the nineteenth of December to the tenth of January twenty twenty five. Okay, someone to move that way? Councillors Avall, seconded councillor Lee, all in favour? It's unanimous? Moving on to the confirmation of minutes. Any discussion? Yep, move that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Avall, all in favour? It's unanimous? Any disclosures of interest? Councillor Grine?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to declare a conflict of interest in CC seven four twenty twenty four, minutes of the council initiated awards committee. I, Rosa Grine, declare a non pecuniary interest, significant conflict for the reason that a family member is involved. I will leave the chamber and take no part in discussion for voting. I also have another one, if you may. The merril minute, MM one zero twenty twenty four. I, Rosa Grine, declare a non pecuniary interest, significant conflict for the reason that a family member is involved, and I will take no part in discussion or voting.
Okay, thank you councillor Grine. Councillors Avall?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. In report MM eleven twenty twenty four, Hunter Transmission Project briefing request, I'll declare a non pecuniary interest, significant conflict, for the reason that as part of my employment, I'm currently working alongside Energy Co on projects. And so until I seek further clarity around that, on this occasion, I will leave the chamber and take no part in discussion or voting.
Okay, thank you councillors Avall. Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Relating to report WI twenty nine two thousand twenty four, I, Mr Lee, declare the following interest, non pecuniary interest, less than significant conflict, for the reason that one of the listed matters in the report went to the local emergency management committee. For comment, through my primary employment, I'm part of the LEMC, choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting, as it's not influenced my ability to carry out my public duty.
Okay, thank you councillor Lee. No, no other interests? Okay. No petitions for tonight? No, no guest speakers for tonight. We'll move on to englobo voting. Councillor Lee?
To move in the recommendation that having read and considered the reports in the agenda related to items GMU eleven two thousand twenty four, appointment of audit risk and improvement committee independent chairperson, CC seventy seven two thousand twenty four disclosures of interest in written returns, CC seventy eight two thousand twenty four resolutions tracking report, and CC seventy nine two thousand twenty four, the investment report November two thousand twenty four, that council adopt the recommendations as printed in the business papers for those items.
Okay, can someone second that? Councillor Joad? Any discussion? Put forward to a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Okay, moving on to report number MM nine slash twenty twenty four. This is the minutes of the organisational and general managers review panel meeting held on the twenty fifth of November twenty twenty four. So essentially, this is more of a procedural matter because of the timing of this. So it couldn't, it couldn't be accepted into the agenda as per a regular item. So the recommendation being that the minutes of the organisational and the general managers performance review committee of the twenty fifth of November twenty twenty four be adopted as a resolution of the ordinary council. There's any discussion on that? No discussion? Okay, I'll put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Oh, sorry. Councillor Dixon, Grine, Hill, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmski, Pascoe, Saval and Wotton, those against. Councillor Joad and King, motions carried? Okay, again. Oh. No one's that fast. Apologies. Moving on to merril minute ten slash twenty twenty four. So this is the minutes of the council initiated awards committee held on the second of December twenty twenty four. Do we have any discussion on that? No discussion? Okay, we're all happy with how it's read? Yep. I'll put it forward to a vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous? Just wait for councillor Grine to come back. Move on to the next item. Yeah, we've got, we'll change it up with councillors Avall to leave. Thank you councillors Avall. Okay. Okay, we might move on. So moving on to MM eleven slash twenty twenty four. So this is to do with the Hunter Transmission Project briefing that I'm formally requesting. So I'll, I'll read out the proposal first and then move on to the recommendations and then hopefully can have some discussion about this point. So I want to draw council's attention to the need for council to engage directly with Energy Co with regards to the Hunter Transmission Project. This is, this is a project of significant scale and importance, and I'm aware of the confusion, of some confusion and concern that is, that it has generated among our community and stakeholders. Given the scope and potential impacts of this project, I believe it is vital that councillors are fully informed and equipped to engage constructively with both Energy Co and the broader community. Therefore, I propose that we formally request a comprehensive briefing from Energy Co. The objectives of this briefing would be to firstly, ensure councillors are provided a detailed briefing before the environmental impact statement, the EIS, before it goes on public exhibition with the project's details, timelines and objectives, provide an opportunity for councillors to collectively offer informal feedback, highlighting any community concerns or observations that may need addressing. Thirdly, reinforce the importance of effective communication and collaboration between Energy Co, council and other key stakeholders. So as many of you are aware, Energy Co have previously provided briefings to the former mayor and myself, as well as Lake Macquarie mayor, Singleton mayor. As the current mayor on this project, councils, councils project team have also been briefed on the project with requests for asset data to assist with staff's technical studies associated with, associated with the EIS. Energy Co has initiated a regional reference group, which I'm a part of, with members from several councils and community representatives to facilitate strategic discussions between Energy Co and the Hunter region community, providing a platform for, for collaborative discussions on crucial aspects. Crucial aspects of the HTP, including the project design, community views, minimising impacts on landowners and the environment, and maximising benefits for the Hunter community. As a member of the RRG, I will actively advocate for open lines of communication with the Energy Co, with Energy Co and other key stakeholders throughout the project lifecycle. Clear and transparent communication is essential to mitigate confusion and build trust as this project progresses. By facilitating structured dialogue with Energy Co, we can ensure that councillors are well prepared to advocate for the best outcomes of the community. So effectively, what we'd like to move is that council is, that council endorse a formal request to Energy Co for a detailed briefing before the EIS, before it goes public with regards to the Hunter Transmission Project. That's probably the key point that I really want to labour home because we all deal with members of the community. We want to make sure that we assist with those submissions before that EIS goes live, particularly get them prepped, field those questions. And then from there, that council invites councillors and New South Wales state member for the electorate of Sessnock, Clayton Bar, to actively participate in the briefing. And thirdly, that council note the importance of maintaining open lines of communication with Energy Co and other stakeholders throughout the project lifestyle. So I'll now put the, is there any discussion about this? Councillor Joad?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Being a ward A councillor, I've been contacted by a lot of residents directly affected by this Hunter Transmission line. In particular, I've been now twice out to the Colben with a community group who have been trying to have communications with the EC. The biggest concern that I've got from residents is the fact that they don't know who to go to to actually find out the information about what their land's going to be valued at, the land accusation, like process, the whole thing. And they're so upset because they don't know who to turn to. In particular, there's one person who's extremely affected in Millfield. They're not just taking partial amount of her, of their land, they're wanting to take the whole house, who rightfully so, when she spoke to me, was really upset. And I sort of said to her, you know, it's not really, it's not council that's doing this project, it is, you know, Energy Co, it is a state thing. But she's like, who do I turn to? Because you're my ward councillor, I need help. So I feel like to help our residents that reach out to us, this motion would be amazing, because then we actually can get everybody in the room that really needs to talk about it, because this project's not going away. And I feel like if it was you that had house or land that was getting bought for a project this big, you would want to be informed on all the details and not just kept in the dark. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Joad. Councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Yeah, fully supportive. Just a question to the GM and the directors. How much correspondence has the council had from Energy Co with this project?
Director of Infrastructure?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thanks for the question councillor Madden. Our teams have had several briefings from the project team for the Hunter Transmission Project, very high level, very similar to the presentations that have been provided to the general public and to Mayor Wotton. We've also engaged with Energy Co to share asset information as they assess the EIS. But outside of that, the project teams and myself have not had further interaction with Energy Co related to the Hunter Transmission Project.
No further questions? No. Councillor Pascoe?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I just had one quick question. With a notice of motion like this, if we do endorse a formal request to Energy Co and they say no, or they can't make a compatible time, what happens to the notice of motion?
Well, effectively, I could answer that, but it basically would be a moot point at that point. That, you know, if they don't want to act on it, I would suggest it'd be in their best interest based on feedback from the community and making sure we're well versed in what we're talking about collectively. There's no bottleneck in information. So, you know, unless there's some other points that might be there, but I think it'd just be a moot point and wouldn't go anywhere.
Okay, beautiful, thanks.
Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I just want to speak in support of this, because we've seen from past experiences, some of the reactions that we can get out of the community largely due to a lack of information available to them. And I find it really hard as a councillor to actually field questions on this topic, because I myself don't actually know, other than what I've been hearing from community groups and my own research as well. So I do believe that this is a step in the right direction. And, you know, with our new engagement strategy, community engagement strategy, this would also be in line with that to try and, you know, be more proactive on situation, making sure that the community does know where we're up to with certain projects, even though that I do acknowledge this is largely out of our control. But I think we can still take steps to try and help the affected community members by this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor King. Any further discussion? No, we'll put the matter forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Just get councillors Avall back. Thank you, John. Okay. So moving on to report number PE twenty seven slash twenty twenty four. This is to do with the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Management Plan. Oh, apologies. Thank you, director. Are there any motions of urgency before I move on to the next report item? No motions of urgency? Okay. Okay, now we'll, we'll move on to report PE twenty seven slash twenty twenty four. So the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Management Plan, the public exhibition report and adoption. Now, someone to move that? Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Lee, speaking? Reserve your right? Any debate? Councillor Joad?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Okay, so the report on the ACHMP, I believe, should not be supported due to the following key factors. One, cost implications. The information indicated that the assessment costs for developers and residents related to the ACHMP requirements could range from seven hundred and fifty to a hundred and twenty for basic elevations, up to eight thousand to ten thousand for larger, larger scale assessments. Council is always pushing for more development. Will this not create a shortage that will have us having issues with state as there is so much drive for housing? Lack of resident awareness. When this report come to council prior to the election, I debated it would be that it would affect the residents being able to know about this and put in submissions, as residents would be busy with the election and forget about this. This report supports the concerns I had with it saying no submissions were received. When I posted this on my social media the other day, I got a lot of responses from residents that said they didn't know, otherwise they would have made a submission. Now, this report feels like a push from state. We've already had some things come in play that we spent, you know, about four hundred and fifty million statewide, federal wise. And so in conclusion, ba, based on lack of resident awareness, my belief of misalignment with the national sixty point one percent vote and the unknown costs and how this truly affects DAs, I can't support it. And before anyone wants to try and say anything, look up WA and what happened there with the farmers, we need them. And they ended up revoking it due to the fact farmers couldn't even farm their own land that they pay rates for and mortgages on. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Joad. Councillor Dixon?
Yeah, tonight I'm going to be speaking opposing the adoption of the Aboriginal Culture Heritage Plan. I just want to highlight a significant procedural issue that occurred during the development of this plan. At the council meeting dated the twenty first of August twenty twenty four, a motion was put forward before council, report number PE one seven slash twenty twenty four, to consider if the draft Aboriginal Culture Heritage Plan will be put on public exhibition. At this council meeting, it was brought to the attention of council that when the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Committee meeting was held on the thirtieth of July twenty twenty four, that a quorum was not met. Despite this recommendation was to, it was made to proceed, the recommendation was made to proceed with public exhibition of the draft plan. As a quorum is an essential for a committee to conduct official business, without a quorum, any decision or recommendation made is invalid. Therefore, the decision to put the draft plan on a public exhibition was fundamentally flawed. And for this reason, I urge council to reject the adoption of this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Dixon. Councillor Hill?
As long as there's no other debate, because I'll close the debate.
We're sure? Okay, okay. Councillors Avall?
Just a couple of things to point out tonight. We've just been told that not only are we going to upset the state government by doing this, it's also being pushed on us by the state government. So we're trying to sit on both sides of the negative fence here by opposing it. The, the other thing to mention from the memo that went out regarding questions is, this isn't about small scale building a house and delaying people putting a property on their, a home on their, their blocks. This is about larger scale developments like subdivisions. And it's to do with areas, though, it says, around assessment is dependent on features of the development site, including watercourses, rock escarpments and relevant cultural information available or significance of the site. So we're not talking about significant delays that are going to go on people building things on, on blocks of land, or extra costs for people doing that. This is about saying, when people are doing large scale developments, we've got a lot of cultural heritage, Aboriginal cultural heritage in our area, right across our local government area. And this is about saying, if you're going to do major developments on that, you need to be mindful of what's there and make sure it's protected. So it's as simple as that. I'll be supporting it tonight.
Okay, thank you councillors Avall. Councillor Pascoe?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I just wanted to ask one quick question. It said that the draft plan was publicly exhibited for the ninety days. Does anyone on staff able to tell us if it was conducted through just online, or if there was the community pop-ups like we do for other events?
Acting Director? Oh, okay. Actually, we'll put that through to the comms manager.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the question. The engagement was principally online, but throughout the project itself, there was considerable face-to-face engagement with the Aboriginal communities. I might also add that the exhibition period was nearly three months or three months, which is much greater period than normally would be required for the exhibition.
Thank you. The other question that I have is, with the quorum not being met in the thirtieth of July meeting, what, where does that place us? Anywhere or?
Director?
Thank you, Mayor Saval. First time, sorry about that, Mayor Wotton. I got through free. The reference to the Aboriginal Advisory Committee that was in Corate, that is an advisory committee, they don't make decisions on behalf of council. So the decision that council then subsequently took in relation to putting the plan on exhibition was totally a decision for council and is totally legal.
Okay, so they're separate to the other four or five groups listed in the report? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Joad, you got a question?
Thank you, Mayor. If this didn't pass, there is other policies in place that will protect our beautiful heritage. Am I correct?
Well, yeah, there is, oh, I can answer a little bit there. There, there is legislation there, as councillors Avall mentioned, that, that does guide us. While I'm speaking on that, I guess my two big things would be, if we were to boil this down and synthesise it for the community to understand in complete layman's terms, and in my opinion, that this would be best practice of combining all of those policies into one, you know, exhaustive plan that council can, can follow. So it'd be best practice there. And, and also, in my opinion, it's best practice for relationship building for our Aboriginal community. So while there is legislation there, requirements from state government and Commonwealth as well. So it, you know, in my opinion, it's making sure that we're, we as a council are operating within best practice.
I guess I just don't like the fact that it's state and it's not actually our Aboriginal community.
Okay, I think you. Councillor Lee? Yeah, councillor Lee, yep.
Yeah, just a couple of questions if I could. Zero exhibitions, zero responses, sorry, when, during the exhibition period. Has that happened on any other items that council have sent out previously?
Director?
Yes, it has.
All right. So with that in mind, has there been a precedent where council then send all items back out to exhibition again when there's been zero responses? Has that been the standard practice, or we just move on?
Director?
Thank you. I can't recall an instance where there was, was, they were put back out where there was no submissions. However, ultimately, it's decision for the elected council, if they wished to do that. But there has been extensive consultation through the development of the whole plan.
Thank you.
Okay, now, no further debate before I give it to councillor Hill, because it's going to be closing. So, okay, councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Just in closing, a lot of points I'd, I'd made notes on to talk about have been covered by the councillors, but just to jump on to the back of perhaps what you, some comments you made, Mayor Wotton, in yours just recently. The, my position especially in this, while there is legislative guidelines and existing areas and clauses in councils LEP, which guide us in relation to Aboriginal cultural heritage and heritage in general in our LGA, I think we would be remiss to not have something at this level of detail that focuses on the specific heritage of our that focuses on the specific heritage of our LGA. State legislation has to be by, by practice very broad to cover all areas of the state. Whereas this plan, which has been developed since way back in March last year, when it was first, the draft was first issued to us for review, this has got a lot more detail and has a lot more, has had a lot more consultation directly with people of interest and groups of interest in our LGA that it affects. The report itself outlines a number of the groups quite a few times that have been consulted on this in our LGA and specifically outlines a number of sites unique to our LGA, such as Mount Yangga, for example, or the Finchley Lookout, things that would not be identified in such finer detail when the legislation is considered under review. I also note that in the plan here, it makes reference to the Aboriginal Heritage Information Management System, which was something I'd never heard about or looked at myself until looking at this report. It's a, it's a system that you can create a free account for online and use it to zoom into areas of the map around the state and it will identify, it will show you what recorded heritage items exist in that area. I did it as an example very briefly over the area of Head and Greeda, just to show sort of what kind of scope there would be and how this, this new level of heritage would affect, say, someone in the area near where I live, doing something on their house, knocking their house down, building a new house. And the program itself online shows you quite clearly the known Aboriginal heritage sites or artefact sites. And they are all, almost all in areas that are the bushland or around the Hunter Expressway. You don't find them scattered quite often around these housing developments or historical housing developments or even the new ones, because they've been addressed as a part of the development process. So I think the concerns raised about the, what impacts this would have on development, I think it's actually a benefit. The, the additional scrutiny that will be put on larger developments to ensure that these don't just steamroll through areas of cultural heritage in our LGA is a positive. And I think that the amount of consultation that's been done and outlined in this plan with specific groups, while there was not submissions from the general public when it was on exhibition, and I note that it was on exhibition at the same time as our Aboriginal Community Action Plan, which I know got a number of public submissions on it as well. So there were, there were people actively being engaged with council plans during that time. This one itself did not, did not get many from the people because a great deal of the relevant members of the community had been contacted during the development of this over the last 12 months. So I commend staff on the, on the additional detail in this plan. And I think it's a step forward to relationship building with our cultural groups in our LGA.
Okay, thank you councillor Hill. Any further discussion? No? Well, that's right, it's closed the debate. So we'll put the matter forward for a vote. All in favour? Councillor Groine, Hill, King, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmauski, Pascoe, Saval and Wharton as against. Councillor Dixon and Judd. Motion's carried. Okay, moving on to report number CC72/2024, the revised community engagement strategy for public exhibition. Has someone to move that way? Councillor King, seconded councillor Hill? Any, councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually really happy about this report, so I just want to make a bit of a statement about it. The big challenge here is making community engagement not just effective, but truly meaningful. The current strategy highlights key changes that are holding us back, including a lack of trust between the community and the engagement process. Limited opportunities for people to participate and get involved. The need for stronger collaboration within the organisation, a lack of clear communication around goals and expectations. To truly improve the engagement process, we need to tackle these challenges head on. The goal is to build trust, reach a wider audience and ensure everyone knows exactly what to expect and how their voice being heard. To overcome these challenges, we need to implement solutions that make community engagement dynamic, comprehensive and transparent. Principles like transparency. We need to ensure that everyone has access up to date, accurate information and that we're actively showing how input is shaping decisions. Accessibility and availability. Engagement should be available to everyone. This means offering both online and offline options and ensuring we meet the various needs of the community physically and digitally. Collaboration and internal communication. We're only as good as our team. By engaging early and often with internal stakeholders, we ensure that everyone is on the same page and pushing toward the same goal. Clear expectations by making sure we set the stage from the start. Community members need to know exactly what's being asked of them, what the goals are and how their input will make a difference. The proposed solutions directly address the challenges that we face by committing to transparency, sharing accurate real-time information and showing how feedback shapes decisions. We'll begin to build trust. It's all about showing the community that their voices are heard. Access and availability by making engagement easy for everyone with clear, simple communication and multiple ways to get involved, whether online or in person or at accessible locations. Internal engagement. Early ongoing collaboration with the council staff ensures we're all in sync with support we need to make engagement successful. Setting and meeting expectations. We make sure everyone knows exactly what's on the table, what the engagement goals are and how their contributions will be used. This clarity reduces uncertainty and builds confidence in the process. So the solution we've outlined directly tackled the challenges identified in the strategy by focusing on transparency, clear communication and collaboration. We'll rebuild trust, ensure accessibility and provide clarity for all involved. Ultimately, if these strategies are executed well, they will completely transform the way we engage with the community for the better. So well done and thank you to everyone involved in this.
Thank you councillor King. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to add something to the 12 community pop-up sessions. I think they're like a fantastic thing, but I noticed that the Kari Community Festival wasn't on there. And I did actually attend that festival and there was a lot of tents there with different information from different organisations, but I did notice the council one wasn't there. And I just thought that would be another great opportunity for council to engage with the public. So I don't know, do we add another dot point there or?
So you're looking to make an amendment?
Amendment to that.
Okay. Have someone to second that? Councillor, councillor Judd? So just to clarify, are you looking to make an amendment to the report or to the actual?
So it actually says 12 community pop-up sessions in the documentation on page 50 of the agenda. And it's names all the different places where people can actually go to speak with council.
Okay, yeah, so you're suggesting that a couple were missed in this report? What happened retrospectively or you'd like to add that for future?
Well, I'd just like to add the Kari Community Festival to that list. I don't know how I go about that, but that's what I'd like to do. Add there, so you've got the list of the 12 pop-up sessions and I'd like to make that 13 pop-up sessions and add the Kari Community Festival into it. If that's possible.
Okay, we're just bringing up the document.
Thanks, Mitch.
Yeah, yeah, councillor Hill?
I think perhaps to, to keep the entire resolution of the motion simple, perhaps if the, one of the directors would like to speak to, if including the Kari Community Festival as a consultation venue could just be passed along or a note made to the engagement team. And that may be sufficient enough to ensure that it is used in future events. It's because, I mean, having, having a particular event added to sort of the scope of our engagement may be too, too specific of an information for this resolution perhaps. Would you agree?
Yeah, director?
Yes, we're going to swap seats, councillor Hill. Yeah, I'm not exactly sure which page you're referencing in the report, agenda, but councillor is right, it's going out on exhibition. So certainly I would suggest the best way is for you to articulate that in an email as a submission. And then the, when we wrap it all up at the end, the guys can look to how they can build that in.
Okay, so just to clarify, you'd be happy with that councillor Dixon submission?
It's a good, it's a good comment, a good point to make.
Okay. Councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mayor Wharton. I could be missing something here, but on page 50 of the agenda where it talks about consultation, it says in the review of the existing community engagement strategy, consultation included past tense. So I'm not sure if it's referring to the plan going forward or I, I think it's referring to what's already occurred to date.
So just a point of clarity? That's what, just the statement? Okay. Councillor Hill, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just will confirm with councillor Dixon that she, I believe what her comment was that the one that she's mentioning, the Kari Community Festival, was missed or was not, was not included as a consultation thing, hence it's not in the report. And so her comment is, and the submission that she has mentioned that she will make to the public submission of this is to see if that can be included in future community sessions. And perhaps there may be another, a few other events. Councillor Judd just mentioned to me that, say, the Postyby Grand Prix might make an addition to another good location or event or the Stomp Festival. If they haven't been specifically listed there for this, they may be used for consultation on other events. But if they're not currently being used, I think that would be handy that they get included in the rotation of, of consultation venues.
Okay, any further debate or discussion? Okay, we'll put the item forward for a vote. Those in favour? Is it unanimous? Okay, moving on to report number CC73/2024. It's the minutes of the council-initiated awards committee, held on the 7th of November. Thank you councillor Groine. Okay, just wait for her to leave there, okay. So if I could have someone to move that way? Councillor Pascoe, seconded councillor Hill? Any debate or discussion? Okay, we'll put the matter forward for a vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous? Could just get councillor Groine back, please. Thank you. Sorry, councillor Groine, just to confirm, did you have a, an interest in CC73 and 74? Okay, just wanted to clarify. Okay. Oh, I haven't moved the next report yet. Sorry? Oh, sorry, okay. Councillor Madden?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Wharton. Yeah, I do have an late interest in the next report, CC74. Better put my glasses on here. Dash slash 2024, I am the, on the committee for the Sessnock Hockey.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but significant. Okay. We'll just wait for you to, to leave the chamber there. Thank you. Okay, now report CC74. Yes, councillor Lee? Yep.
Much like councillor Madden, I may have missed one here and I'll just quickly read off his sheet. And declare an interest in the same report. I, Mitchell Lee, declare the following interest, so non-macunary, less than significant conflict for the reason that I am a life member of the Kari Kari Minor Rugby League Football Club. Listed on there, I'll miss that one, so I will remain in the chamber.
Okay, thank you. Now, we haven't yet moved the matter yet, so if I could just have someone to move? Councillor Pascoe, seconded councillor Hill, speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Wharton. I'm just looking to speak in support of the resolution in front of us. It's really fantastic to see, this is one of the, I think, one of the largest sort of grants committee resolutions we've had come to us during my term of council. And it's fantastic to see a really wide range of recipients from the community groups in this resolution. I think I've probably made comment in the past, both in the council chamber and privately, to different community groups that I'd been a bit disappointed about the lack of submissions in some of our grant programs, knowing that a lot of, a couple of the different groups in Kari Kari have not been on previous lists as well. But it's fantastic to see a really wide range of, of community organisations who have been successful in acquiring grant monies. I did some quick maths on the side, there's a total of $82,500 awarded across all of these individual separate grant programs and grant schemes here, which is a fantastic representation of council's support and commitment to these groups in our LGA. And I think it's, it's really a step in the right direction in being able to engage so many more of these groups. I know that grant proposals and funding requests can, can be really time consuming, intensive for volunteer organisations such as this. But to see such a great, a great number of these being approved by our committee is fantastic and thank you to the, to the committee for their work on this and staff.
Okay, thank you councillor Hill. Councillor Judd?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the public know that I will abstain from voting on this item as much as everything on there is very, very good, like councillor Hill just said. But due to an item in this report that I've spoke to the general manager prior to this on the best way to handle it, and it was to abstain from voting because I do not feel comfortable to vote on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Judd. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only problem I have with this is why are we taking funds from one scheme and then giving funds to another? Is that like a normal practice to take funds from somewhere and give to another fund?
Director?
Thank you, Mayor Wharton. These are all under the one sort of big grouping area of community grants that we provide, so little subsections of each one. And certainly where there's money that's not used or allocated in the past, they have been put to other areas or carried forward in the future years. So it's certainly not something that's unusual.
Yeah, councillor Dixon?
So I just noticed that, so they're taking funds from the Tidy Towns Scheme. And then at the end there, there's actually a Tidy Towns, an application for a grant from a Tidy Towns, hang on, I just got to find it, Greeda Sustainable Community Tidy Towns. And their, their funding was rejected, yet they're taking money from that fund and giving it to someone else.
Director?
Thank you. In this case, the grant application was assessed against the criteria in the, in the guidelines. And part of the issue that was surrounded, the application from Greeda Sustainability, Sustainable Communities, Tidy Towns, application was around where the works were going to be done. And mostly there was issues around the road access, the accessibility and the like. So that was the reason for the grant not being recommended for approval. Hence, there was funds left over and the committee is recommending that they be allocated elsewhere. Ultimately, that's a decision for council, hence why it's here tonight. And if the council wants to make any other change, they certainly can. Noting, of course, that what I've just said in relation to that Greeda Sustainability one, there are issues around where the monies were going to be spent in relation to road access and safety concerns.
No further questions? Councillor? Okay, no further questions, uh councillor King?
Thank you Mr Mayor, just a short statement, um I acknowledge that this time they're actually asking before just moving funds from one account to the other, so I appreciate that, this is what we expect, thank you.
Okay, no further discussion? Okay, we'll now put the matter forward for a vote, those in favour? Councillor Dixon, Grine, Hill, Lee, Mason, Palmowski, Pascoe, Saval and Wotton, those against? Uh, yeah. Mark that down. Point of clarification?
Are, are we allowed to abstain from voting, or should we leave the room, I I didn't think there was an option that was granted, I think you either had to vote one way or the other or not be in the room.
Uh, the understanding that I have is that you can actually abstain, it's something that I don't think we did last term of council, and I don't think it's been a, a, I think only the uh office of local government is concerned if there's a pattern of abstaining, aside from that, I think it's okay, yeah, well, it is okay. Uh councillor Hill?
A question on, on clarity as well, um I note in the draft minutes on the screen that there is no record of how two of the councillors voted, is that, I guess it's a technical question as to will the abstention be recorded in the minutes, I know historically in the previous term, abstentions we were advised would be recorded as votes against, um but is that a new, will there be new formatting to allow the minutes to record who abstained?
Yeah, so we'll, to to field that one, so like, we will note in the minutes that um it it has been abstained.
Okay.
Um obviously it doesn't fit in that ticket box system that we have right now for or against, but it will be noted, um yeah, in the minutes right there. Okay. All right, so we'll now move on to report number CC seventy-five slash twenty twenty-four, that's the annual code of conduct complaints report, have someone to move that way, councillor Hill, seconded, councillor Pascoe, any discussion? Oh, sorry. Any discussion now? Uh mover was Pascoe, seconded Hill. Uh speaking councillor Jerd?
Thank you Mayor, um just a quick question, in that report, I seen that we did have a figure for, it was about eight, eight thousand or something for code of conduct, is there a way to find out, even if it is not, right now, who, who are they for?
Uh director?
Um the short answer to that question councillor Jerd is no.
Yeah.
Um code of conduct matters are obviously confidential, um this is the requirement under the office of local government guidelines, and then that figure includes any external parties that have been involved.
Yeah.
As well as staff time, or staff estimate time of dealing with those code of conduct matters, but we do not break them down into individual items.
No worries, thank you for that, I thought it might have been that, but I forgot to send the email in to ask, thanks.
Okay, thank you, so we'll put the matter forward for a vote now, those in favour? It's unanimous? Moving on to report CC seventy-six slash twenty twenty-four, it's the annual, annual report on unreasonable conduct by customers, have someone to move that way, councillor Pascoe, seconded councillor Grine. Any discussion? Councillor Jerd?
Thank you Mayor, um I find it challenging to support this, this report, as I've received numerous inquiries from residents who feel targeted after being placed on this list simply for seeking clarification, I emphasise with their concerns, as I understand the implications of being categorised in this manner, the feedback I receive from minority who perceive questions as negative highlights the importance of fostering an environment that encourages informed consent and comprehensive understanding, for that reason, I will not be supporting this report.
Okay, any further discussion, councillor Pascoe?
Uh thank you Mayor Wotton, am I allowed to ask councillor King a question through you? Uh sorry councillor Jerd, just written relation to um just the comment, um in the report it says there was only one um, one encounter reported as unreasonable persistence um for the whole year of October to September, so I'm just wondering if the people that are upset um are officially in this report, or if it's just that, yeah, unofficially?
Might have to field that one via the director, so director?
Thank you Mayor Wotton, um I think it's probably important to remember, this is not about complaints that we're getting to council, this is about unreasonable conduct of customers, um whilst they might come out of one or the other, not directly related, so this is where it's over aggressive, over consistent um behaviour towards staff, and certainly the numbers are very, very small, customer complaints are a whole different category, and there is um reports that we do on those as well, but they are slightly different.
Okay, councillor Hill?
Thank you Mayor Wotton, um I would just note um for those um in the gallery and those watching at home, in the report, in the reporting period for twenty-three, twenty-four, we, as councillor Pascoe mentioned, we only had one um unreasonable persistence, and a, and a person added to the unreasonable customer conduct um record, then, and that is a reduction from the last year, and a, and a, and a pattern of continued reduction um from twenty, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, there were seven instances of unreasonable behaviour, and we've, and that's now cut down to one instance of unreasonable persistence, so I think that's probably a commendation to um to staff and to the wider community as a whole, that we are, we seem, we seem able to um discuss and work in our differences a little more effectively um under these, uh under this programme now.
Okay, thank you, no further discussion? Put the matter forward for a vote, those in favour? Councillor Dixon, Grine, Hill, King, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmowski, Pascoe, Saval and Wotton, those against, councillor Jerd? Okay, moving on to report WI twenty-seven slash twenty twenty-four, it's the naming of Avery Rise Park, has someone to move that way please, councillor Hill, seconded, councillor Palmowski, uh speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you Mayor Wotton, um my, I'm speaking, I'm in support of this, of this recommendation, this resolution, but I just have a brief comment to make in the way in which uh these surveys are operated, um speaking with staff a little this afternoon, I made the comment that uh things like this naming of this park are advertised on council's website and on council's, on Together Cessnock page, where individuals are able to engage with the surveys, and perhaps it falls on council laws and the wider community as well as council staff, but I think that it would be fantastic in future, especially when we, we're doing namings of parks or renaming of parks like this, if we can, if we can make sure we're reaching out to the local schools in the area to include um the children, the ones that are most likely to be using these um, these locations, to get them involved in this, uh these surveys for name decisions, I think um, I think perhaps we may not go as far as giving them open slather on recommending names, we may end up with a lot of parky, Mick Park face um locations, if that was the case, but um perhaps the way in which the survey was, was designed where they had options of preset names drawn on by relevance to the location, I think that would be great, uh but to try to reach out to those schools and and the local community groups to ensure that um there's a decent amount of input getting put into these, because uh this one in particular was being exhibited um just after the election, and I know I, I struggled to sort of get it around it and get it publicised on my social media, um so if, if we can jump on that in the future, that'd be fantastic to see.
Okay, thank you councillor Hill, uh agree with the notion of not letting it be open slather for schoolchildren, uh any further discussion? No further discussion, put the matter forward for a vote, those in favour? It's unanimous? Okay, moving on to report number WI twenty-eight slash twenty twenty-four, Curry Curry Nostalgia Festival, March twenty twenty-five, uh someone moving that way councillor Hill, seconded, councillor Grine, uh speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you Mayor Wotton, um just briefly again, um to speak in, in support of this recommendation, this is the third or fourth um endorsement of the in-kind support that during my time on council, we've given to the nostalgia festival, um and this year will mark the twenty first, I believe, year of the, of the festival, last year was the big twenty year anniversary, this will be the twenty first, um this will be one of the uh, well, the first or second uh festivals held on the, on the massively improved uh Cole Brown Rotary Park in Curry, after the, the finalisation of all the works there in the CBD and the, and the park uh this year, and so it's going to be fantastic to see, we uh, we always pray that the weather, um the weather turns out good for us, uh because there's been many wet nostalgia festivals in the past, but I also would like to congratulate the community groups uh that are involved in the organisation of this, um I've been to a couple of meetings uh in their preparations for it, and uh while the event, some may look at the event and think it, you know, there's, if you get about a hundred cars, two hundred cars, a couple of storeholders, but these guys work for the twelve months from the close of the previous festival to the opening of the next one, uh to work towards getting this opened, and I think it's a fantastic um event for us to be offering this support to.
Uh councillor Dixon?
Uh thank you Mr Mayor, um first I just want to say I'm in support of this, but I just wanted to make a comment, um I am a believer in user pay, as we all know, um nothing is free, and someone is paying for this waiver of the fees, um so I just want to um, you know, I like to think that um uh maybe council can maybe halve the fees, or I don't know, I don't really know the situation of these committees, what, if they have funding, or how they would pay for this if we didn't do the waiver of the fee, but I just think someone's got to pay somewhere, the funds have got to come from somewhere to cover the cost, um and as we're always trying to save money here and there, I know it's only a small um bit of money, but when you add all small bits makes bigger, bigger loads of money, so um I just think we need to look into um, to recoup some of the fees somehow, how I'm not sure, but that's just an opinion really, thank you.
Yeah, thank you councillor Dixon, might require some further investigation and discussion with directors, uh any further discussion? Put the matter forward for a vote, those in favour? It's unanimous? Okay, moving on to report WI twenty-nine slash twenty twenty-four, it's the minutes of the local traffic committee held on the eighteenth of November, have someone to move that, that way please, councillor Jerd, seconded, councillor King? Any debate? No discussion? Okay, we'll put the matter forward for a vote, all in favour? It's unanimous? Moving on to WI thirty slash twenty twenty-four, this is to do with the tender, so it's T two thousand twenty-four hyphen fourteen Curry Curry Netball Facility, uh could I please have someone to move that motion, councillor Grine, seconded councillor King? Speaking councillor Jerd?
Mine's just a quick question, um I might have missed the email back response, but when is this project supposed to start, if the tender's accepted tonight, when is it supposed to commence?
Uh put that forward to the director of works?
Three Mr Mayor, um councillor Jerd, it's expected to start the first half of twenty twenty-five, so um either quarter one or quarter two of next year.
Thank you so much.
Okay, councillor Grine?
Thank you Mayor Wotton, I, I just, I'm very happy to see this come up, it's been a long awaited project, um since, I think it was Merrill Swanson MP announced her uh last election commitment for the money for this, and then we ended up being short um with some money, and I think the state gave us a little bit of money, um and then we also had, I forget where we got the other bit of money from, it was the Locksford Development, we allocated some money to, to make this happen, to allow our, our Curry Netball team um not have to go over to Maitland or, or be in an, in another area, but to be actually called the Curry team and, and have the twelve courts that they've asked for, so I'm, I'm very pleased to see this come up, and finally we get to actually get the work done, thank you so much.
Thank you councillor Grine, any further discussion? No debate, put the matter forward for a vote, all in favour? It's unanimous? Okay, now we'll move on to uh business which uh written notice has been given, so reports BN ten slash twenty twenty-four, this is opening of briefing sessions for public observation. Have someone to move that motion, councillor King, seconded councillor Jerd? Uh would you like to speak to the motion, councillor King?
Please. So um I'm about to make my case, so please bear with me, uh as a democracy, council needs to hear, consider and debate issues in an open manner, a key component is ensuring the community can observe and hold accountable their councillors when they debate issues of importance. That opportunity is hindered by clause three point three four in the Code of Meeting Practice that states pre-meeting briefing sessions are to be held in the absence of the public. Clause three point three four is also in contrast with clause five point three oh that states everyone is entitled to attend a meeting of council and committees of council. Council must ensure that all meetings of council and committees of council are open to the public. Clause fourteen point one in the Code of Meeting Practice outlines the grounds on which meetings can be closed to the public, such as dealing with confidential or sensitive information that requires privacy. This motion seeks to open pre-meeting briefing sessions to the public, the proposal reflects a commitment to making council proceedings more accessible, ensuring that the public has the opportunity to observe discussions that may impact them, this is in line with a discussion paper recently released through the Office of Local Government in September twenty twenty-four about the need for change and returning local democracy to councils. This promotes democratic accountability, allowing residents to understand the basis of council decisions, there are also other benefits, for example, if councillors are unable to attend briefing sessions due to other commitments, this will give them the opportunity to watch at a later date and listen to discussions they currently may miss out on because on, because clause five point three three of the Code of Meeting Practice then can be implemented to record meetings as they will no longer be closed to the public. The exception provided under clause fourteen point one allows the council to keep certain sensitive or confidential items private, ensuring that discussions involving matters like legal advice, personal issues or confidential, commercial information can still be handled securely, this balance between transparency and confidentiality is in line with the legal framework which permits closed meetings for specific well-defined reasons. The proposed motion is consistent with the principles of our delivery programme under civic leadership and effective governance, and the strategic direction our council's processes are efficient and transparent, the motion appropriately balances the need for public access to council deliberations with the necessary confidentiality exceptions outlined in clause fourteen point one in the Code of Meeting Practice, in line with section ten A of the Local Government Act requires foreclosed meetings, I believe the motion should be adopted to promote greater openness in local government operations, thank you.
Uh councillor Saval?
Thank you Mayor Wotton, and um I'll be speaking against this motion tonight, um we, we've heard a lot about the words transparency and openness and, and things, and um for me, it's just a, a bit of a, a farce about why this is coming up, it's a, uh, we get briefed on two types of, of matters generally, like very rare that anything is not one of these two matters, it's either confidential item that we need to be briefed on, or it's something that's coming up to the next council meeting that we need to make a decision on, and so if it's, we've just gone through and said with confidential item, it can't be open to the public anyway, because it's a confidential item, so this motion won't address that, the other thing about whether council's hiding information or we're doing things that we shouldn't, when I said we get briefed on things that come up to the next council meeting, all the information about that is in the council papers that we all get, that are put out in the public, they're not hidden from anyone, this is out there open for anyone. This is out there, open for anyone in the community to read. But what briefings provide is a safe space without politics, without a gallery like we've got tonight that want to interject and cheer and let's clap different people speaking. Like, we don't have that in briefing, so we can have an honest and open discussion and ask the dumb questions that we might think, oh, I'm not sure about that. So let's ask them in a briefing so we can actually find out the information, we can talk about what it is. Now, these happen a week before the meeting, so we've then got time to go and research things more, to ask for more information from staff about what's in the report and to allow us to make better decisions. So what I think we would see from this is we'd see, if we see briefings at all, we'll see closed down, tight briefings that are just reading to us what's in the council report. We're not here to grill council staff in front of the public and the community because that's what I think they'll turn into. There'll be political point scoring opportunities by councillors to attack council staff. Now, I know there was talk and it was mentioned about the stuff that the ministers put out and I want to make it very clear that I have great respect for the Minister for Local Government. He's not only been a good minister, he's been a long-term mayor and understands local government. But him and I disagree quite vehemently on this point that we would not see this type of behaviour put in place at a state level. We would not have every time a state department goes to a minister, let's invite the whole town in, let's livestream it when the state departments get briefed on legislation that's coming up. Because that's what we're dealing with here. It's effectively the same. They're dealing with legislation, we're dealing with council reports. So every time we want to talk about one of those items, let's get the state ministers in there and have them livestream every meeting that they have with the departments. Or when the ministerial staff go in and brief the crossbenchers and the opposition MPs or even the backbench MPs in government, they go and take it there, let's publicly have them invite whoever's in the street in that wants to listen, throw it online and see whether that works for decent level democracy at a state level. I think the answer is, we all know that's ridiculous and no one would expect that to happen at a state government level. So why would we expect to do that at a council level? We are a level of government. We should treat ourselves like a level of government and operate in a proper, professional way. If we just want to use things where we come out and let's talk about buzzwords of transparency and let's open everything up and see things, well, we're here to make decisions on behalf of the whole of the community. There's some things that are going to have to do confidentially and there's some things where we want to be able to ask the questions and get the answers in a safe space to do that. And that's why I'll be opposing this resolution tonight.
Okay, councillor Pascoe.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I just had a couple of statements, I guess, to say. As you guys would have seen, I sent an email in with questions regarding this to ask what would happen if the briefings are made open to the public. So for those of you who haven't had a chance to read through that yet, the response was that there will be logistical and resource implications, including a cost associated with open briefings. It says particularly if the COMP implications need to be applied. And basically, it's summarising that the briefings would then become very similar to a meeting. So it would be a lot stricter on the staff, a lot more work behind the scenes. What I do like about it is the idea of transparency. However, as councillor King mentioned earlier, our new customer engagement plan is all about transparency and being part of the public and, you know, building trust with them. So if we've got an amazing customer engagement plan in place, I don't necessarily see why we need to enforce extra work on the staff and extra pressures on ourselves when the briefings are for us to learn. What I would like to suggest is that we defer the nomination, nom, notice of motion, sorry, defer the nom to give staff time to come up with a plan, to see if it is practical and bring us back a report to say this is the implications if this happens. I don't believe that we can justify voting on a motion tonight when there are still so many pieces of the puzzle to put together.
Okay, so just to clarify, just for the sake of orderly discussion here, so would you be looking to move an amendment to defer? Or would you like to?
Sorry. Yeah, I would like to defer the motion if possible.
Okay, it needs a specific timeframe to defer?
Well, it'd be up to the general manager and staff to know when they could put that information together. It makes it very hard if there's a Christmas break too.
Okay, just bim off that you did speak.
The suggestion around the timeframe is that the minister, as councillor King mentioned, is reviewing the general code of meeting practice and around this. And maybe we should defer it to coincide with his finalisation of that so that we can make sure, because whatever the minister puts out at any point, we're going to have to implement. So it would seem silly to change something sometime early in the new year and then straight away have him put it out, which is due in the new year, and then have to change it and put it all on exhibition again. We should try and tie it up in.
I'll take it that towards a quick, so councillor King, you want to comment?
I have another suggestion, maybe if you'd be open to trial this, not actually implement it, trial it for a period. And I have reasons here that I can tell you why if you give me the opportunity.
Councillor King.
We need to deal with councillor Pascoe's amendment.
Okay. Yeah, well, we're looking at clarification. Okay, so let's park that for a moment. So we'll go back to what you're looking to propose and move in terms of deferring. So a period of time, so we're discussing a period of time to put into a motion. So what we've got so far is that councillor rescinds the Code of Meeting Practice 2024 from the dates. Oh, sorry, we haven't written anything yet, so we haven't even started to address anything. So, sorry councillor, sorry Pascoe, I'll put you on. There you go.
So it would be to defer to coincide with the recommendations by, is it COMP? O L G? There's a lot of letters, O L G? And perhaps in that meantime, we can get a report from the GM to work out if this is practical. I know councillor King mentioned a trial, but how do you have a trial when we don't know exactly what's happening? So we don't know if it's going to be webcasted, we don't know if it would be open to a gallery. Well, no, it's just a statement really.
Okay, so just to make it clear, so to defer to coincide with the recommendations of the O L G, to have someone to second that? Councillor Hill? Director Commentary?
Thank you. Just to put a little bit of clarity around councillor Pascoe's motion or amendment, it should tell you something along defer to coincide with the outcomes of the review by the Office of Local Government into the, whatever it was called, councillor conduct framework. And then the report can come back to council at that time for you to consider.
Happy with that wording? So it's still seconded with councillor Hill? Yep. Speaking councillor Hill?
Yes, sorry, I didn't expect to be speaking, I thought we were just going to vote on, but I'm happy to speak to it. That was generally what I was going to speak on as well. I think that the, I'm eager to see what recommendations are brought back by the minister and what changes to the model code of meeting practice is recommended. I think the model, the councillor conduct and meeting practices framework includes a lot more than just the way in which briefings operate. There could be a number of changes in the way the code of meeting practice operates or the code of conduct operates that we will have to implement if a new model is handed down by the minister. And I think it would be a good idea to address all of these at once. If we can get that information from the minister next year, hopefully is when it's handed down, we can take on board what's in the model plan. If this type of open briefing aspect is not included in the new model code of meeting practice framework, perhaps that can be discussed again at a later date. Councillor King is free to bring this back to the council at that time as well, there's nothing to preclude that. And I think that that will allow us to address all of the changes at once. I think, I agree with councillor Pascoe in wanting to have additional information about what the impact on staff time and funds will be to implement it. Not saying that it's going to be something that will preclude us from making the decision, but I think it's good to have that information in front of us. And so I'm happy to support this deferral until we hear from the Office of Local Government.
Okay, so just to be clear, we're going to speak to the amendment. Councillor Jurd?
Oh, well, I'm kind of a little bit against the amendment only because, only because I prefer the original. I do want to speak on it though because I feel like I might not get a chance. So opening briefings allows residents to engage directly with the workings of the local government, fostering a sense of community and trust. Last week's briefing would have been perfect for residents as it broke down all the different sections of the council and what they do. When residents observe these discussions, they gain a better understanding of the challenges and opportunities facing our community. This not only empowers individuals but also strengthens the bond between council members and the residents we serve. Furthermore, I'd like us to consider filming these briefings for later viewing. Many of us struggle work and other commitments that may prevent us from attending these sessions in real time. By providing a record access, we ensure that everyone has the opportunity to stay informed and engaged regardless of their schedules. This approach not only promotes inclusivity but also saves valuable time for staff. When residents can access recordings of briefings, they might find answers in their questions without needing to attend in person, therefore streamlining communications and reducing the burden on staff. When the community knows and understands how council work, then they will be, in my opinion, less negative. State and federal committees, they are filmed and live streamed, are they not? This is nothing to do with politics. In the briefings, we do have more time for questions. From the staff member that wrote the report, that's the one who's speaking so they can really explain what staff want to spend ratepayers' money on. Thank you.
Okay, councillor King. This would be the, yeah, sorry, against amendment?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't agree with this amendment and I have a couple of points of why. Council used to meet more than once a month, so what my original motion asked wasn't to meet more. Council staff is already preparing agendas and presentations for the briefing sessions and minutes are recorded and sent to councillors afterwards, like councillor Saval pointed out. The only difference from what we currently do would be to broadcast a meeting and currently we're already halfway there because some councillors is attending via audio visual link. And this would actually benefit some of those councillors if they're unable to attend to view it later. So the discussion paper asked to completely ban briefing sessions and that wasn't what I was suggesting. It's not up to us to preempt what the state government may or may not do. All I'm asking is that the briefing sessions that is not sensitive to confidentiality be open to the public, exactly the same way as we handle council meetings right now. So I don't agree with this amendment.
Okay, so we're going to put the amendment forward for a vote. So just to be clear, so we're all crystal clear, if I could just get everyone to look at the screen. So we've got the original motion, that was proposed and now it's the amendment. So for everyone watching at home, that's what we're actually voting on now. So if I could get everyone to vote for this. Yep. So we'll put it forward for a vote. Yep. So those in favour? Councillor Grine, Hill, Lee, Madden, Palmowski, Pascoe, Saval. Those against? Councillor Dixon, Jurd, King, Mason and Wotton. Amendment is passed. Yep. So now we're going to put that motion forward inclusive of the amendment, so now we're going to vote. So put it forward for a vote. All in favour? So just to be clear, yeah, we're inclusive of the amendment now as part of the emotion, so that's what we're all voting on now in favour of the amendment. Okay. Yeah, yeah, it's part of the motion now. Okay, so councillor Grine, Hill, King, Lee, Madden, Palmowski, Pascoe, Saval. Those against? Councillor Dixon, Jurd, Mason and Wotton. Motion's carried. And that concludes business for tonight. Oh, my apologies. Councillor Reports. I know I've got one councillor in particular that has a few reports to mention, so councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. All righty, I'll try and be reasonably quick. I've submitted these reports to all councillors and to council staff prior to, but I'll touch briefly on the first item is a report on the Local Government New South Wales Annual Conference. Myself, councillor Palmowski and councillor Chris Madden attended the Local Government New South Wales Annual Conference over the weekend of Sunday the 19th till Tuesday the 19th of November in Tamworth. This conference is a gathering by delegates from councils all across New South Wales where motions are debated to inform the advocacy of Local Government New South Wales and the issues in which they discuss and advocate for to the state government. So I want to go across, there was 110 motions debated in one single day. So you see, we got through a small amount tonight, but they get through a massive amount in like half a day up there. But some of the items that are relevant to the Sessnock LGA that were discussed were things like advocating for a reduction in cost shifting from the New South Wales Government to local councils, increasing the maximum amount of developer contributions that are able to be levied by councils, requesting the ability for councils to apply for additional conditions or fees to be put on short-term rental accommodations like Airbnb, which is an important issue here in Sessnock as well. And several motions regarding improvements to public transport all across the state. So I'd like to thank the council for giving myself and councillor Palmowski and councillor Madden the opportunity to attend. It's a great opportunity to get an idea of what other issues are affecting councils across New South Wales and to network and develop ideas that we can bring back to Sessnock. So that's the report on the Local Government Conference. The second report is just a quick report on a recent Pecoben Mountain Roads committee meeting that myself and a number of other councillors attended on Tuesday the 3rd of December at the Pecoben Community Hall. And so this was just a meeting with the community group that Mayor Wotton referenced in his mayoral minute earlier tonight, a group of concerned residents who have been advocating for further consultation and action from Energy Co in relation to the transmission project going through near their properties and planning to use their road. So this is quite a long, three pages worth of minutes, but it's got some fantastic information in there for any councillors that were unable to attend. And I believe it'll be made available on the hub for councillors to check in with. But it's a really interesting committee to attend if you ever get the chance and I think it's a really passionate group of community members and I'm eager for council to be able to assist moving forward wherever we can as per the mayoral minute. And then two other brief reports on two of our external committees that myself and councillor Madden are members of as per the resolution when delegates were nominated for committees in our first council meeting. Councilors are required to bring reports back on the external committees that they are attending. And so these reports include the published minutes from this committee, which covers off the current operations and remediation to the Black Hill Quarry and the Budai Quarry down in Ward D, sort of on, as you head on your way to Beresfield, off to the side, there are these two long-term quarries and council participates in the community consultation with the ongoing running of these quarries to ensure that the community members are kept up to date about its operations and involved in the administration of remediation and the operations day to day. So they're all going to be made available for councillors to check on. If you like reading about dust monitoring and vibrations around quarries or the amount of trucks movements, that'll be a thrilling read for you to jump onto, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you councillor Hill. Any other councillor reports? Okay, thank you councillor Hill. Any other councillor reports? Okay, get you, get you on in technicality, it was last month, Mitch, I'm joking, councillor Hill. Oh, we'll declare the meeting closed. Thank you.